It's nine o'clock, let's call the meeting of... As soon as we get the attention of the Administrator, we'll call the meeting to order. The special meeting in Door County Board of Supervisors Tuesday, August 23, nine o'clock, we're on schedule. We're coming to you today from the multipurpose room at the Justice Center on South Duluth Avenue in Sturgeon Bay. So, we'll call it to order and I ask that you rise and join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I thank you, and the next item will be the roll call by the county clerk.
Anderson.
Present.
Fosted.
Here.
Bran.
Here.
DeBaker.
Here.
DeWitt.
Here.
Fisher.
Here.
Fontaine.
Here.
Dunlison.
Here.
Haynes.
Here.
Levy.
Here.
Leeno.
Here.
Myers. Miller.
Here.
Mulliken.
Here.
Ninus.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Runquist.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Verley.
Here.
Wiegand.
Present.
Zipper.
Here. How come I'm always last? Presentation of the Agenda is next. We have a so moved from Paul and a second by Mr. Patrick Olson. Questions or comments? Mr. Meyer is also in attendance. All in favor of the motion signify, but say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Okay, the capital improvement program, information only, no action will be required. We're going to talk about the communications upgrade that has been in the hopper for a little while. And also the Senior Resource Center later on. And the presentation today is going to be made by Tim Alman and I see also, okay, Anne Demese and we have... Did I see Dicky Burris here, Tim? Oh, ho, ho, a crutch list, but a keen. Glad you can keen. Welcome back. All right, with that, we'll lay out the Agenda for today and if we pay attention to what's going on, he'll introduce the presenters and also a schedule. What we intend to follow, and if you came through the lot, of course, you saw a whole bunch of rescue vehicles there, fire and rescue, and we hope that we don't have to see them leave. No, Tim, it's Sawyer.
Thank you, Leo. Thanks for coming today.
Will this be up on your little thingy share?
It is available to you out on the website if you go out.
How do you do that?
You go out to the county board Agenda.
Yeah, got it.
Okay. Your county board website, Mark's giving you a hot link to it. And there was supporting documentation, a PowerPoint is available to you for download. It's the last document on today's
document.
For eight twenty-three. All right. Mark, you want to show them how to get it?
Mark.
But it is available to you, David can show you for download. So the slides that you have in here today are available out on the website. Codea County Board. But thanks for coming today. Again, as we talked, the last time we got together, we started to go through some of the projects in the CIP. And we started to talk about public safety having quite a few of those projects over the next five years. And so when we started to do that, we sat down with Mike and Shirley and we started to discuss how we'd actually, in these tight economic times, move ahead with getting some of these projects for public safety funded. And that's basically what brought us here today, talking with Leo. Leo asked if he thought it would be a benefit to the rest of the county board to not only go through what we're looking at putting in in the next five years, but actually go and be able to kick the tires, so to speak, today, and touch the technology, touch the hardware, see what it's about. And in order to do that, we brought you to the epicenter of the public safety system. Okay, which is over here at the Justice Center. So today, we're going to go through a couple of slides, we're going to talk about the history, we're going to talk about how we ended up here today. Okay? We're going to talk about communications in Door County and what some of the weak points are and why we need to fix those weak points. We're going to talk about the fact that dispatch, the Sheriff Dispatch Center is the epicenter of our communications. Everything starts with dispatch in our communication system. We are going to take a tour of all the equipment, going through the dispatch center, then we're going to go into the computer room behind dispatch center, the MDF, the main distribution frame. We'll walk down the hallway, give you a bathroom break at the end of the hallway if you need it. We're going to walk out the end of the hallway, over to the radio tower, the radio tower hut, and then from there, we'll proceed into the parking lot and start with the ambulance. Okay? A for ambulance, that'll be the first stop on the tour today. Your last stop on the tour today will be the fire trucks. We have three different fire trucks, we'll probably break into some smaller groups. Again, I believe we have a southern door, a northern door, and a Sturgeon Bay fire truck out there. So for those of you who represent those districts, I would ask that you go and talk to those individuals on those fire trucks. Okay? So we're going to break that down and we're going to try to get you back in here by ten to ten-thirty. And that'll be a race. Okay? Secondarily, today, it's open-ended. So as we go through this presentation, if you have a question, don't hesitate to ask it right away. If you wish, we'll come back in here, we'll close it back down after the tour, and we'll open it up for questions as well if you want to save it till the end. But while it's fresh in your mind, it might be best that you just ask it as we go along. Okay? What I want you to understand is we have a spreadsheet in front of you today, it has a green line and a red line down at the bottom. Okay? And although we'll talk specifically a little bit today about these eighteen or nineteen projects that are outlined in the spreadsheet, I want you to understand that these figures are subject to change. Okay? We have projects that are included in here for the 2012 through 2016 CIP, and you've gotten that booklet already. And so those projects were all put in that CIP, you've seen that. Some of these projects, although they don't look like they would fit within the CIP because they're forty thousand dollars, we want to make sure that you understand, this is all part of the communication systems. These are subsets of the communication systems that we would have to come to you over the next five years and ask individually. And if you really think about that, and the timing of coming to those funding decisions, if you don't have that funding and we can't get the microwave to Bailey's Harbor, our system suffers. Okay, our constituents, users of our system suffer. That is why we're here today to try to go after bonding the entire package so it is funded and we can get the technology out to our end-users. So, the scope of the project can change based on your funding sources, technology, and future needs, and other possible collaborative arrangements we make with either local, state, or federal agencies, or private sector businesses in Door County, who can also augment our public safety system. So again, although we are here today on the twenty-third of August, it is what we know today with these nineteen projects. It is subject to change. Okay? So with that in mind, here's the spreadsheet that we were talking about, it's in there. And I'm not going to spend a great deal of time on this spreadsheet. Again, you're going to have another seven days to grind over these figures, what they mean. I would ask that you call us in the next seven days, myself, Chris Hecht, Dick Burris, Anne Demese, Carrie Goson, Sheriff Vogel, and ask them, what does that mean to you? If you have some questions on those nineteen projects. Okay? But again, we're trying to bundle that together today for a bond of two point one million dollars over the next five years. Okay? As far as project work. Go ahead, Paul.
What do you mean by some are mandated, some are not?
Mandated means, for instance, and we'll get into this today, narrowbanding is a federal mandate. We have to take our radio system and narrowband it over the next five or ten years. We've got to do it twice. And as a result of those federal mandates, by the way, unfunded from the feds in many cases, we have to take care of that. Okay? As a county, you're responsible for maintaining this system. Okay?
Not everybody understands narrowbanding.
Narrowbanding is basically taking a frequency, let's just say that it can handle, it's a sixty-four K channel now, you're actually putting two channels in that same sixty-four K. So now it gets divided into thirty-two. And we have a couple of slides in this today that'll talk about narrowbanding. And Chris can go into the details of that a little better than I. So. I was a miss, I started without introducing. This is Anne Demese from Emergency Management, Carrie Goson from Supervisor of Dispatch, Chris Hecht, works for you, is an EMS, and he's the Fire Chief, Sister Bay. And you have a whole plethora of public safety folks in the back row. I hope that you know some of them from your districts. Okay? And we'll meet them all as we go out on the tour. My bad. So, to talk about communications history. Go. We got him. All right?
Is that a gun in his pocket?
That was in nineteen ninety-eight, when I retired.
That wasn't too long ago then. I don't know if he's going in the cell or not, no, I'm just kidding. But, back in the day when we had communications, it was a much smaller deal. And you could handle it with just a couple of people and a couple of radios. And those radios could talk from north to south, east to west in our county. And it did do a very good job of it. Okay? All of you understand the geography of Door County and its inherent problems as far as getting signaling. I struggled with it with wired connections trying to get fiber from north to south. Okay? But the other thing about our geography that you have to understand in our public safety system, and you will hear later today, we have all the geographic regions of the waters of Lake Michigan and the Bay of Green Bay to cover as well for water rescue. So it's not just your land borders you're worried about here. And you'll see in a future slide as well, all the different agencies we have to be interoperable with. And it's very, very integrated system, highly integrated system. Okay? I want you to understand that we continue to look for cooperative partnerships throughout with our communication systems. When we started looking at the southwest tower build down along the four-lane corridor, we started to look for cooperative arrangements with Brown County and Kiwanee County. It does look like Kiwanee County is ready to go with us on a tower build in southwest. And that is a huge savings to us. It splits our power costs hopefully roughly in half versus us taking on that entire build by ourselves. As you know, the communication system, the CATS Communication Advisory Technical Subcommittee meets roughly every two months to discuss what are priorities and what are our maintenance and what are the things that we need to do over the next five years to keep the system up and operable. So at that point in CATS, we have most of our users of the system come and they either come up with whatever complaints or problems we have with the systems and we start to actually brainstorm how we're actually going to make the system work. Okay? CATS is an advisory committee, used to advise law enforcement. And why don't you let you know that within the last year, we have put CATS underneath IS. So they are now responsible to the IS Committee. A couple of reasons for that is because of the major move from analog or older systems to an IP system. If you didn't already know, our microwave back hall is already all IP. We basically take all of our analog communications, convert it to an IP packet, and bring it back here to the Justice Center on those microwave links. That was the first reason. The other reason is the technology in the vehicles, the technology on the individuals, everything is going IP. So everything that they're capturing out in the field is going to a digital packet. The other reason that we thought about this, and again, this was discussed with Leo and Mike, is 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 a neutral public safety department. In other words, do I drive around in polyester brown and carry a nine millimeter? Some days I wish I could, but I don't. I'm neutral. In other words, I don't, I'm not affiliated with the Sturgeon Bay PD, I'm not affiliated with the Sturgeon Bay Fire Department, Sister Bay Fire Department, I'm neutral. So as the requirements come into CATS, okay, no one gets more priority than anyone else. Okay? And so as we looked at that, we thought that that would be the right way to go. You also have, in the near future, our one-legged cane man, now he's walking on level ground. If most of you didn't know, our history of the communication system is soon to leave or walk out the door. I hope he acts as an advisory member in the future, but Dick Burris had kind of, we sat down and talked this through for many coffees and we decided this was probably the right thing to do. If you want to ask him about it, please feel free to do so. Okay? I'm going to turn it over to Chris and Carrie, and I'll see you back when we're ready to go on tour.
Thank you, Tim. I'm speaking today, as you know, I'm a paramedic for the county and the Fire Chief for Sister Bay, but I'm speaking to you today as an end-user of the radio. Typically, in my day-to-day work operation, my volunteer fire department operation, I use the radio a lot. So I'm here to speak as an end-user. Door County is a little bit unique. The county board has decided to do a county-wide radio system. Many counties are moving towards that, or multi-county radio systems. Many counties have a county-wide answering point, and then the nine-one-one call takers then shift the incoming call to the appropriate agency for dispatch. The county here has brought it all under one roof. And that roof is the county board. And as Tim alluded to, the county board has the responsibility for that system and the ability for that system to be used by the end-user. We talked about a communication system, it starts in the field. It starts with somebody who picks up the phone and dials nine-one-one. They are now part of the communication system. If that call can't go through, that's our problem. And that system extends all the way through the microwaves and the radios to dispatch, and then back out to the end-user, again, an end-user, me, or Tim, or one of the fire department's EMS, who takes the call and then responds to that caller. That is the system that you are responsible for. Okay? It is your responsibility, or the county's responsibility, to maintain that system, to make sure that it works appropriately, and to keep it moving forward with technology. It's important to understand that any change to the system, good or bad, affects all players. We take something out of the system, or we add to the system, it's just not the Sheriff's Department or the Police Department. It affects every fire department, every first responder group, the ambulances, the police departments, and then the sub-agencies that we don't use as much, maybe the DNR or the State Patrol. Okay? The communication system is the key to interoperability. It is the only way that me and Sister Bay Fire Department could talk to Tim Hurlash and the Sturgeon Bay Fire Department is to communications interoperability. The key to that system is dispatch. Everything goes through dispatch, every nine-one-one call, every administrative line, everything comes through dispatch. If dispatch can't handle the information, if they can't receive the information and give the information back out, the system fails. That is the key. Okay? Carrie's going to talk a little bit about the dispatch component and how key it is to the system working and the movement of the information back and forth.
All right. Again, my name is Carrie Goson, I am the supervisor for the nine-one-one center, and I'm also a dispatcher. Today, I'm going to give you just a little brief, I guess, dispatch one-on-one. Basically, in a nutshell, what a dispatcher's job is, every single phone call that comes into the dispatch center, we either resolve it or refer it. So whether it's a phone call coming in and they want to know, where do I go to get a temporary license plate? To, I'm coming up on vacation and are the cherry blossoms in bloom? Seriously, we do get that phone call. To, something that makes the newspaper, like our standoff in the city that we just had with a man with a gun. So everything that happens in this county comes through dispatch first. So, and dispatch, as you notice, is basically the hub, the hub of the wheel, so to speak. So dispatch is responsible for all of the entities that you see. It isn't just law enforcement, but the law enforcement agencies would be the Sheriff's Department, Sturgeon Bay PD, also the CSOs, which are the community service officers, Washington Island PD, the constables, all of the EMS groups, so all of the EMRs, all of the ambulances, emergency management, and all of the fire departments in the county. So, and with that, every entity has their own procedure and protocol. So there's so many things that go on with a simple phone call. So I'll give you an example of how one phone call can incorporate a number of those agencies all at the same time. So I'll give you an example of a personal injury accident. Okay, we call it a PI accident. Let's say it happens at a high-profile location. First of all, we're dealing with all the nine-one-one calls. And everybody knows, everybody's got a cellphone, so we don't get just one. We probably get fifteen to twenty. Then, what we'll do is, once we get that location, we're going to dispatch the EMR group, the ambulance group, and depending on protocol, it could be two ambulances for that location, the fire department group, and also the law enforcement agency for that area. Now, mind you, there could be up to twenty-five people talking all at the same time on three separate frequencies into dispatch. And that's just the one incident. Life doesn't stop. So we have that one incident that we're dealing with and everything else that's going on in the county. So I do have a little audio for you to listen to. But the one thing that I also want you to keep in mind is, everything that you hear today and everything that you see today, there are only eleven of us that do this in the county. So I just want you to keep that in mind. So, to kind of preface our audio, to give you just a small example of how life can change in dispatch in an instant, this audio is from July thirtieth. I don't know if you guys remember that day. That day, I was working a seven AM to seven PM shift. Beautiful, beautiful Saturday. In fact, during the day shift, one of the county deputies said he swears there were five hundred boats out at Chambers Island. That's how beautiful of a day it was. Well, then we got a little storm still that came through. So, and you're only going to listen to about a minute of information. Now, when you listen to that minute of information, that went on in the dispatch center for a good two hours. So, what you're going to hear is, first of all, we already had a report of two boats with four people on board in each boat in distress about five miles out from Haynes Beach. Also, you're going to hear tones, because my partner is paging out a fire department for a twenty-foot boat with five people on board that's in distress. I'm attempting to contact the Coast Guard to let them know of all the water rescues that we knew of at that time. Bug Fire Department is actually calling in to dispatch on the fire frequency about a wagon that's overturned, partially blocking an intersection. I'm also taking another call of a fishing boat that's in distress, this is up in the Gibraltar area, I believe. And also, the first phone calls are starting to come in. We had a large tree that took power lines down, now mind you, on State Highway forty-two in July at four-thirty in the afternoon, on fire in front of the English Inn just north of Fish Creek. So, that's everything that's happening in that minute of information that you're going to hear. And you're going to hear the phone conversations, the radio conversations, you're going to hear tones. You're also going to hear kind of a shrill ringing in the background. Those are all the other nine-one-one calls coming in. So hopefully, you'll be able to hear all of that and maybe pick out all of those incidents that are happening at that time.
Folks, we're reporting in to Book One. I want you to bring in, Book One, we have a team in twenty-eight bars, if I didn't know, initial name of injury.
They're reporting a part of a old boat out on the highway. They're trying to get a timer. They're trying to get people over there, trying to check out the power. They're trying to get the airway. They're trying to get the motor. There's a section of the bus, or they all were.
The railway is partially blocking the roadway.
Door County nine-one-one, what is your emergency?
Well, it's out of the day. We were up on the cover EMR, they're requiring a call. They're saying, oh, the street lane has a mouth, the port of a cover, fishing boat, twenty- foot, people on board, no, in Lake Jackson, they have left home, and they're unable to get that.
There you have it, life and dispatch.
Thank you, Carrie. I'm going to speak a little bit about some of the deficiencies in the communication system in Door County. And what we hope to do is that this bond issue that we're talking about today is going to address some, probably not all, of the deficiencies within the communications in the county. Ideally, we'd like to say that a police officer, a fireman, a paramedic, anywhere in the county could be able to contact dispatch on their radio. One hundred percent coverage. Is it possible? Absolutely, it's possible. Technically, it's possible. Financially, it's just the cost-benefit isn't there. Okay? So what do we want to get to, or what do we strive to get to? The national standard for communications is ninety-five, ninety-five. You should be able to receive ninety-five percent of a transmission ninety-five percent of the time when you're inside a typical residential-style building with a portable on your hip. Okay? Ninety-five percent of the transmission, ninety-five percent of the time. We're not there. I think all the public safety people in the back of the room could attest to you that we're not even close to this. This would be our goal. Will this get us there? Probably not. Will it get us much closer than we are today? Yes. Okay? That's the goal. This is Door County's communication system as it stands today. The photos on the outside represent our current tower sites. This map is here for you to take a look at after the tour, after your meeting today. And certainly, as Tim mentioned, if you have questions, ask them. If you have questions after the meeting, please ask them. These represent our current tower sites. As Tim alluded to, we're very fortunate in Door County. We own very few of these tower sites, we maintain very few of these tower sites. We have great collaboration with other public entities and private or corporate entities that have allowed us to build the system out to where it is today with minimal funding. Some of the issues we continue to have, we have significant coverage issues in the south end of the county. You're going to hear a couple of incidents or a couple of people talk about that here shortly. Significant coverage is here. Significant coverage issues in the Bailey's Harbor through to Fish Creek in the North Egg Harbor area. Okay? Where we simply cannot talk back to dispatch unaffordable, and we have a lot of trouble receiving pages. This proposal addresses most of those issues. We have microwave communications throughout the county. We have multiple short links or short hops using unlicensed microwaves. Part of the bond issue is to move us to a microwave frequency that is licensed. Okay? The unlicensed microwave systems that we have in the county are susceptible to interference from other users. Just like it's unlicensed for us, it's unlicensed for them. We had an incident about two years ago where somebody put a microwave up that ran relatively parallel to our microwave on Washington Island. It took the entire county communication system down countywide, police, fire, and EMS. Okay? Their interference brought our entire system down. Luckily, the individual that had done that realized what they had done and offered to move their frequency further away from us, allowing our system to come back online. Again, it goes to that cooperation that the county has with other entities. But there's nothing saying that they had to move. Okay? We have those hops throughout the county. One of our plans is to migrate off of those to protect ourselves a little bit. Okay? Good. We're going to hear from, initially, an audio/video clip from Caleb Whitney, who is the Bailey's Harbor Assistant Fire Chief, talking about some of the issues that they have in Bailey's Harbor. Then we're going to hear from a couple of people here in the audience.
My name is Caleb Whitney.
Aaron, can you hear in the back or not? Up there?
We have consistent problems with our handheld radios. We were a part of fire earlier this summer, and had a great deal of difficulty communicating, even though we were obviously all within short distance. We have consistent problems communicating with Walter Fire, especially as we get in the area of County A. We have fairly large dead zones out in our county too. We've also had such inconsistent paging that we were personally subsidizing the paging system by utilizing an e-dispatch, which comes in texts on our cell phones. This will write a guarantee that we actually get the pages in the evening.
My name is Caleb Whitney, this is the fire. Caleb talks about a couple of things there, his problems receiving pages and his problems talking. One of the things he alludes to is a backup system called e-dispatch. The fire departments across the county, and the county has participated in it as well, have put in a system that listens, like a pager does, receives the information, and then runs it through your cell phones. It is it is not dependable enough to be an alternative, to be a dependable alternative to the pager. They market it as an adjunct, and they're quite specific that you cannot use it for emergency dispatch. But it has, it has covered some of those dead zones where pages are missed. But it has, it has covered some of those dead zones where pages are missed. Kurt Vander Ty is here. He's the fire chief for Brussels Union Gardner Fire Department, and he'll speak to you briefly about some of the issues that he's had in the southern end of the county.
Good morning. In addition to being the fire chief, I'm also an emergency medical responder for the town of Brussels Union Group. And we routinely have difficulties, especially in the south end of the county. Couple examples that come to mind, whether we're responding to emergency vehicle accidents or motor vehicle accidents, medical calls, or fires. I recall a fire that we had on Chapel Lane, which is on the south end of the county, and we didn't know if there was anyone inside. We had crews going in for search and rescue, but we couldn't communicate. Our crew members that were inside that house couldn't communicate to the engine that was literally right on scene, a hundred feet away. Whether responding to medical calls, we're not able to give information to the responding ambulance, because we're not able to get out on our portables. The south end of the county, particularly right off the county line, is a very difficult area. We also have areas in the township of Gardner, primarily along the water shore, where we've had calls, whether they're water rescue calls or fire calls in run of the residential homes, we're not able to communicate out with our portables. Makes it very difficult, especially when you do have people going inside of a building that they can't communicate to people outside. So, if you have any questions today, I'll be outside and available to answer any of those that you might have.
Thank you, Kurt. One thing to make note of is that the area that Kurt talks about is essentially the gateway to Door County. The amount of traffic and the tourists that come through there, in excess of a million people travel those stretches of roadways where he cannot communicate to an ambulance, dispatch, or anybody else. That is the gateway to Door County. Actually, I have Officer Paul Fidel who'd like to speak about a specific incident that happened to him down in that same area.
I don't know if you remember the call back in April twenty-seventh of two thousand eight, responded to a strong armed robbery that occurred in Breezy Acres in the Towny Union. I was responding from Forestville area. My backup officer was responding from Institute. Unfortunately, Trooper Jenny Austin was in the area and on scene shortly afterwards to back me up. On arrival at the scene, the perpetrators had left. We dealt with an injured lady that had been struck in the head with a pistol. We did a perimeter search in the search of the residence, and then the investigation started. I needed resources. As soon as I left my squad car, my portable was gone. I lost all communications. I didn't realize this, but while Bob Water was en route, he had a suicidal subject with a knife at Brussels General Store, which he responded to with backup. At that time, you know, notifying supervisors, getting investigations down there for the crime scene, that all broke down. So any communication, I would have to go back to my squad car and physically get in the car and use. We had ambulances on scene. There were interviews to be done. There was a cursory search of the neighborhood. There was potential witnesses to talk to, and the communications made that whole situation a lot more difficult.
Thank you, Paul. What he alludes to there, two significant incidents going on in the same type of area is kind of what Carrie talked about. Life doesn't stop. Just 'cause there's one significant incident going on, we have other things. Now, Paul didn't even know that second incident was going on. We'll speak briefly about narrowbanding. We're not gonna get too technical on it. Essentially, narrowbanding is a federal mandate, and the Fed's basically said, "All frequencies must narrowband." And narrowbanding is you're taking an existing bandwidth or highway, whatever you wanna look at it, and you're gonna cut it in half or make it narrower. And you're gonna force all communication that's on that frequency or driving down that highway narrower. The bottom line is, we have too many users and not enough frequencies. So what's the best way to get more frequencies? Tighten up or shrink the ones that are there. Mandated, we must be done with our narrowbanding January first of two thousand thirteen. Door County has been fairly fortunate. Several years ago, the fire departments applied for and got about an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar grant. The county board participated in some upgrades to that grant. That grant paid for our initial round of narrowbanding. Our three primary frequencies are already narrowbanded and have been operating successfully for several years. Police, fire, and EMS are done. In the fall of next year, we plan to narrowband all the rest of the frequencies, so parks, highway, the alarm system, school buses, emergency government frequencies. All of that work still needs to happen. The costs associated with some of those upgrades to that equipment, and the fact that all of the radios, every radio in Door County, police, fire, EMS, all have to be touched and reprogrammed again because we're narrowbanded. Okay? Federal mandate. The bond issue covers some or all of those costs. Okay? The required replacement of the equipment and the touching or reprogramming of the radios. So again, we touched on this, who's required to narrowband? Everybody is. Every frequency has to narrowband. When is it required? January first of two thousand thirteen. We're pretty far ahead of the curve compared to some counties, but we do still have some work and some costs associated with that. We have equipment that is not capable of doing this and must be replaced. One of the other things that's in the dispatch, or in the bond issue to talk about being replaced, is the Orbicon. Just like we talked about dispatch being a key component in our communication system, Orbicon, or the Orbicon system, is the key component that allows that to happen. The Orbicon system handles all of the day-to-day radio traffic. So if I talk to dispatch or dispatch talks to me, it goes through Orbicon. Any pages and information sent to the field goes through Orbicon. Okay? It allows us to communicate. Jason's here, from Bay Electronics, to speak briefly about the Orbicon and why it needs to be replaced. Jason's in charge of the maintenance of the county systems, and his company is, and he can answer questions if you have any specific for the Orbicon. Thank you, Jason.
Chris, I'm Jason Ford with Bay Electronics, the radio maintenance provider for the county. The Orbicon dispatching system was originally installed when the first upgrade at the dispatch center happened in roughly nineteen ninety-seven, nineteen ninety-eight timeframe. When the new dispatch was opened in two thousand and five, the mainframe from the system was moved over. The client computers, screens were all updated at that point. Approximately two to three years ago, Orbicon was purchased by another company called Positron. Positron has, since then, has discontinued all of the Orbicon line. So Orbicon is at end-of-life now. So there are no replacement parts available for it through Orbicon anymore, no upgrades available for it anymore through Orbicon. When Bay Electronics found out that Orbicon was actually being discontinued at end-of-life, we actually went out and purchased an identical system with Door County has, so we could continue to maintain the system that Door County has as part of our agreement with them on the maintenance contract. However, we've started to use some of those pieces, and our stock of what we have left is now starting to be depleted as well. So there may come a time when we won't have parts available to replace a part that goes as defective in the current system. Current system also is not capable of going to digital communications, isn't capable of doing trunking, so there are many limitations to what the system can do today, and where the future of the communication system in Door County will be held.
Questions for Jason while he's up there?
So, any questions in general at all? Okay? Let me just go back through this little bit of a tour. Again, we would ask at this time that only the twenty-one supervisors go with us on this tour. We're gonna have some pretty tight quarters. We're gonna start in the dispatch center, and that'll be the first stop. And if Carrie sees a call come in, she's gonna raise her hand. If you see Carrie Gozen with her hand raised, you need to go immediately quiet, because all of that background noise goes into the call. Okay? So the guys with the headsets on have to be able to hear what's going on in the call. But Carrie's gonna walk you through the dispatch center, show you a little bit about what it's about if there's no call. Then we're just gonna back you off and go into the MDF, where the radio equipment, the E-nine-one-one switch, and all of the technical stuff is. We're gonna walk down the hallway, and as we walk down the hallway, there's some bathrooms on the right side. You need to take a quick bathroom break, jump on in there. We're gonna walk out the end of the hallway and go out to the radio tower, and show you that here, and what provides the radio tower hut. And from there, we will go to the ambulance first. Okay? All right? So, with that in mind, we're gonna go out the door by Sheriff Vogel and go down the hallway to the MDF.
Okay, any calls?
Okay, if there's anybody else that wants to come in here, I just want you to be able to see the screens. All four positions are set up identical, so if you wanna come in so you can...
I'm Hollis.
......
Do, you do.
I'm at. Is everybody in here?
Yep.
Everybody able to see?
No, we didn't vote to do it.
All right. First off, introduce the dispatchers today. John Doyle, he's over on the left-hand side. And Diane Crone is over on my right-hand side. And just kind of, I'm gonna give you a really, really, really brief dispatch nine oh nine, dispatch one oh one. Here, we've got... Okay, hang on, one sec. Radio traffic. We have four positions. All four positions can do exactly the same thing. Also, they're ergonomically correct, so we can stand and we can sit. I'm a stander when I dispatch, 'cause I like to pace. So we've got six screens, two keyboards, and three mice that we deal with on a daily basis. All the screens are exactly the same, except for in Diane's position, that top-left screen that you see is a gray screen. That is our alarm computer screen. So what that alarm computer monitors is, in the government center, we've got panic buttons in all of the offices. So if someone in social services has someone that's causing a problem, they push that panic button, we get an alarm in dispatch stating where that office is, the callback number, if there's a specific entrance they should use to get into... To get into that office. The other things that are monitored on that alarm computer are the tower sites. So all of our tower sites that we do have would be monitored for if the door is opened, if it gets too warm, because the temperature has to stay within a certain degrees, otherwise it'll start to fry all the equipment. Also, the Sunny Slope Tower has a light at the top. If that tower light goes out, we get an alarm, because we have to notify the FAA and let them know that there is no tower light any longer. So they have to let all the planes that are doing flight plans know they have to avoid that area, so nobody hits our tower. And actually, I guess back in like nineteen eighty-eight, someone did hit one of the towers down on Guyer Road, and unfortunately, it was killed. So that's why we need to make sure that that information gets out. I'll just go through all the screens that we have. If you notice, the other three screens, I'll just go left to right. This left screen with all these little colored boxes, that's really all that is, is our schedule soft. All the county deputies, the jailers, administration, dispatch, everybody is on that screen. So every day, we look at it, and we know who's working, if someone's on training, if someone is out sick. And this is important, so that when the oncoming shift comes in, if they're assigning someone to a zone and they're not there, then we need to tell them why. So that's really their resource to make sure of what kind of staffing levels they have. This top-middle screen that we have, that's called our time system. And what we do on the time system is, that's where we run our twenty-sevens and twenty-eights, which are, if you're getting pulled over on a traffic stop, they'll run your license plate, they'll run your person information. Also, this is the screen that we enter warrants, restraining orders. We can even enter body parts, which I think is kind of cool, but kind of creepy. But we can, there's so many different things that we can do with the time system. Also, airplanes, immigration, even if we need to know the fax number for LAPD, we can find it using the time system, so it's a pretty awesome tool. If you notice on the top-right screen, that's our CAD mapping screen. Right now, there isn't anything going on, but that screen was actually, we got that information through a grant that I had written quite some time ago. But what that screen does is, when we have a call that, as long as it has an X-Y coordinate, it will populate on that screen. So if we have someone's address, and it's a valid address, it'll populate on that screen, and we'll be able to zoom in, and we can actually look at ortho photography that was done and overlook that house. So, which is helpful, especially for warrant service, or if they're looking for someone, if there's a lot of outbuildings, it's nice to be able to zoom in and let all the responders know what they're looking at. Phone call, so we'll hang on one sec.
Attorney General Law Enforcement, John speaking.
Carrie, you can go ahead.
Okay. All right. Also, another thing to keep in mind, too, we use that screen for X-Y coordinates with cell phones. So if people are under the misunderstanding that when you dial nine-one-one on your cellphone, automatically, we get a pop, the screen populates, and we know your location. That's not true. What we have to do is, we have what's called latitude and longitude that we will enter, and then it will populate. It's usually relatively accurate. We have actually found people using that. In fact, one incident in the city, a gentleman had a motorcycle accident, and he was pinned under it, and that's how we actually located him. He had no idea where he was. It's also not always a hundred percent accurate, but it's pretty darn close. Now, we'll go to the bottom screens. This bottom left, this is the Orbicon that we had talked about, our radio screen. Now, if you notice, all of these boxes, there's one box that'll be highlighted in green. If you notice, John and Diane have headsets on. So that is what we're gonna hear in our ear. So generally, we'll keep it on sheriff, because that's the main frequency. But let's say we have an ambulance call, one of us will switch to EMS, and that's what we'll hear on our ear. So that's our main frequency. The frequencies that we listen to are sheriff, EMS, fire. And now, okay, you may ask, okay, where do you hear all the rest of them? Well, we hear the one in green in our ear, all the rest of them...
Hang on.
All the rest of them come through a speaker back here in these speakers. So that's the key component for a dispatcher. You have to be able to multitask. You're gonna be taking a phone call in your ear, typing your information in your computer, and also listening to the other traffic that's going on. So it's, multitasking is the key component to be a good dispatcher. So I'll show you the rest of the screens. We have sheriff, EMS, fire, Whisper, which is a state mutual aid channel, point-to-point, which is like a state channel. We talk to generally Brown County and Kiwanee County on a pretty regular basis on point-to-point. Sturgeon Bay Fire, so Sturgeon Bay Fire and EMRs come over that. The jail system, the highway repeater, emergency management, that's actually a frequency that's in all the school buses now. So let's say we have another incident like in Ellison Bay, and we need to move... If we have to move a large amount of people, we could contact all the school buses, have them go to that frequency, and then we could coordinate where people need to be picked up and where they need to go. So that's what the significance of that one. Also, the fire tack repeater. With that fire grant, we were able to put the fire system on a microwave. We kept the fire tack repeater. So let's say we have a large structure fire, and the fill sites are a long ways away. We kept that, so that the fire trucks could actually talk to each other. With a tactical frequency, it has a very short span of where you can talk and where you can listen. This gives them a better range. So if they do have a large structure fire, lots of fill sites all over, they still can communicate. The next screen on here is our paging screen. Hey, John, can you put paging screen up on that back corner, or that back computer? Yeah, if you could put paging screen, just so those that are over there can see it. Okay, the paging screen are all those colored boxes, but we page out a, there's, all of the icons on there represent fire departments. We have special icons for Mutulate Fire Department. So if we have a large structure fire, we hit the Mutulate button, and it notifies more than one fire department at the same time, and we have a specific procedure for that. All the green ones are all the ambulance services. Six fifty is the central ambulance, six eighty is the north ambulance, six seventy the ambulance down in Brussels. All the blue buttons are all the EMR groups. The red, these darker, weather alert tones, if we, weather is probably our most challenging The red, these darker weather alert tones, if we, weather is probably our most challenging event that happens in here. If we have a weather warning, so like a tornado warning, or a, um, severe thunderstorm warning, we use those tones, and it will, it will page out everybody that happens to be on that tower, EMS group, fire department group, EMR group. So we can get that message out to as many people as quickly as possible. Um, also, we set off the tornado sirens in Forestville and in Sturgeon Bay. Now, the third screen that we have is called our Knox box. Um, and what the Knox box is, it, it's, they're in specific fire trucks, and basically what they are, and if I say it wrong, Chris, please, please, uh, correct me. But basically, what the Knox box is, is they have like a master key inside. Um, and what's that, what that is used for is, especially like, uh, the complexes in Sturgeon Bay that have older people in them, rather than, in the middle of the night, when someone falls down, needs help, assistance getting up, they don't have to break the door down. They will say, can you release our Knox box? Dispatch doesn't page, releases the Knox box, that gives them the ability to take out the key, and unlock the building without doing any damage. So, and that's all documented, so whenever they say, release our Knox box, we document that in their radio history. So those are all the screens, just on the ORBCOMM. That's why that's so important, because, like Chris said, that's a radio, that's our paging, our Knox boxes. Okay? Okay. Our next screen, this is our CAD screen. Oh, hang on one sec. Okay. Um, unfortunately, right now, there's not a whole lot going on. I guess, which is good for the tour, but it doesn't really show you a whole lot. Um, this top section is, would be any calls that are happening at that point in time. The middle section is anything that is pending, that hasn't been dispatched out. And this bottom section is everybody that's on duty at this particular point in time, their status, and what they're doing. Okay? Um, and I'll just show you the next screen that we use. This'll be... Okay, this is called our, our CAD screen. So any call that comes in here, whether it's law enforcement-related, EMS-related, fire-related, this is all the information that we have to fill out on this screen. I'll just give you a little example. Um, here's one, someone had chest pain, here's the address, here's the complainant, any additional information on there. Um, and then also, what we do is, and I can show you kind of the way we used to do it, so, and mind you, every system that we have here, we have at least one, two, possibly three backup systems, in case something fails.
Multiple classes, all that.
And, whoop! Okay, here's a, then if we look at their radio history, that's just the radio history for that specific call. So anything that anybody says, we type into that computer, and that is, that is their radio history, that's how that is created. In the olden days, this screen right here, you, well, you remember some of this, Biz.
Yeah.
Some of it, we used to enter on a piece of paper. And we would have to enter the EMS group, the first responder group, the fire department group, all of that was hand-entered. And this radio history that I showed you, every single deputy had a card. And we have an old antique little punch clock that we still have to use on occasion, we don't like to, but we do. So each person was given a card, you punch it, a date and time stamps it, and you write all that information down. So we've, and this wasn't all that long ago. I trained on this stuff. And I've been here since 1997. So that's how much things have changed over the course of a few years. And Biz, you probably have even better stories. So, so that is our CAD system in a nutshell. And also, this system and this system work together, so if there's something entered here, it's gonna populate over there. Okay? And I could show you all kinds of cool stuff that that does, 'cause I love maps, but I won't, I won't take up your time today. Last but not least, this right, this screen on the right-hand side, this is our telephone. That was pretty hard for a lot of us all the time, which to get used to, using a phone, a computer on the phone. So, um, I don't know if I have any history. Um, if you notice, in Diane's position, this area right here, whenever we get a... Okay, I think he's okay. This is the infer, in this upper-left part of that box, when someone calls on 911, if it comes on a landline, or it comes on a cellphone, that gives us X-Y coordinates, this is the, this is the box that will be populated. Um, when it's a landline, it'll give us the caller, the homeowner's name, their address, their telephone number, and that's the information that comes on that screen. If it's a cell call, it'll tell us, let's say Cellcom, and it'll give us the telephone number, but then we would open up a little box here with details, and if you notice, there's a spot for Lat, for Lat and Long X-Y coordinates. So that's where we find those X-Y coordinates, they just, um, they're not actually part of this call, we have to go to another screen to get those.
We gotta keep it rolling.
Yep, yep, yep. Um, and I guess that, we have, uh, 911 cell, 911 bank alarms, emergency notifications, and this is basically our rolodex. So if we need to look up a phone number, we can right-click on that, and, uh, it's basically a rolodex in a nutshell, that's entered, all in that bathroom, which you are going to next, right?
Yep.
Okay, you're welcome.
Keep sorting right all the way in, guys, so everybody can get in. For those of you that have been with us long enough, you recall working with Leo and me way back in 2002 to get this room designed. Um, one of the things that you have to understand with your dispatch and your communications is it is a 24-by-7 operation, 365 days a year, alright? We take that very seriously. You will notice that this room is located on the center of the building. Okay, it is not on the exterior. There is no windows to this room. I barely, rarely allow video cameras in this room. Okay? Because it's a secure room. It carries a lot of secure information. What you see in here is a data center room with all raised flooring, it goes all the way through the dispatch, all of our wiring is underground to those PCs. But all those PCs are out there as a window to the servers that are located in this room, and all that phone gear that you see behind you to get to their 911 information. This whole side of the room is dedicated to the radio system, and all of the dispatching that goes on with the radio and ORBCOMM system, and how they communicate with their various towers. Okay? Bottom line in this, this has also got 24 strands of fiber run out to the tower we're gonna go to next, it's got 24 strands of fiber going over to the highway shop, and over to our other data center for backup, and the justice center, and the way you designed it way back and built it in 2005, this room, that room, and the room that you're meeting in today become the emergency operations center. So if a tornado rolls through Door County, and a MICE, and emergency management will set up an emergency ops center right in that room. All of this technology in this room, literally, is millions of dollars of investment. Okay? It's miniscule, miniscule, to what the expectation of the constituent is. No one that travels to our county, let alone our tax-paying constituents, want to hear that they cannot place a 911 call. Okay? This is what provides it. Behind you is the AT&amp;T Positron E911 system, you see all of AT&amp;T's Dmarks coming in. This is a highly specialized piece of equipment that costs $200, $300,000 when we initially bought it. This is the piece of equipment that is no longer being maintained. Okay, this Positron is end-of-life 2012. So that's why in 2014, 2015, we're looking to replace it. Behind you, the black cabinets are basically PC servers, file servers, et cetera. Behind Holly is all of our networking gear, which interconnects all of this stuff. And again, here's the radio system, if Jason wants to expand on it a little bit about the parts and components of it. I have to admit, when I designed this room, I didn't expect my radio guys to be in here, but that's, that's cool. We got him in here.
This is the ORBCOMM mainframe that I spoke about, that is now at end-of-life, or end-of-life a few years ago, actually. So this is the central processing unit for all of the radio dispatch and paging that's out of dispatch. And then, what we have here is several different, what we call control stations. The system's now controlled via microwave. If that microwave would ever go down for any particular reasons, these control stations continue to talk with the base stations at all in the field, so communications can continue to happen if we have a microwave failure. It's just another form of redundancy.
Thanks, Jason. One of the things that you'll note, when we, when we look at replacing this system, so in other words, when I replace this ORBCOMM, keep in mind, the technology continues to get smaller and smaller, true. But when you really design a data center, what you really wanna be able to do is, leave all of your existing equipment up and in line, you wanna come out to a line right here, you wanna set up all of your new equipment. Okay? And you wanna get your new equipment online, beta-tested, and ready to rock and roll. Because this is a 24-by-7 operation, you basically gotta turn the power off to this system, and turn the power on to this system, and you gotta be ready to roll. The planning of that, and the scheduling of that, is left, of course, to all the agencies and CATS. Communication Advisory Technical Subcommittee starts looking at how that's gonna happen, planning it through, working with all the agencies that are affected, and that's where it happens. It's gonna happen in here. But the other things that you did in your building of this building, if most of you know that we're here, you have a generator the size of this room in this building. So this rule, this building is rock-hard, and again, if we have a true disaster where power is lost, this room, and that room, and the EOC that you're meeting in today are self-sustaining on that generator. So we can continue to run business as usual. Somewhat limited, but we can run business as usual. I'm gonna take a right now, go down the hallway, if you wanna take a bathroom break, we're gonna just head out to the radio tower shed. Are there any questions? Don't hesitate to ask.
Why is the clock not moving?
Battery's dead. Um, what you see in front of you here is, again, as we built the building, we, um, had to move our mic, we had to migrate from down at the old jail office, we had to migrate our central repository for Sturgeon Bay's communications out to here. And so, as you look up at this tower behind me, of course, it doesn't provide radio frequencies back and forth, but you'll see two big gray dishes up there as well. One of those gray dishes is pointed over to Brussels Hill. One of those gray dishes is pointed to Sunny Slope Road. Okay? So all that radio traffic that's going on, whether it's fire EMS, um, or sheriff, or any of the other supporting agencies, is basically routed across those microwaves out to those various towers. In your bond issuance, the first two projects that you see at the top of the spreadsheet that's in the proposal today, is to build basically two of these. One in the southeast corner of our county, and one in the southwest. Okay? The one in the southwest at this time, sounds like Kiwanee County is willing to cost-share with us, because they could get radio signaling off of that tower in the southwest. In the southwest, we are looking at a site that the county already owns. In the southeast, the Melody Acres site, we do not own it, and we're in negotiations at this time with the property owner to either lease or buy that property to put up one of these towers. When you put up one of these towers, it is a piece of infrastructure that will last for years, no less than 25 to 30. Okay? It's not that we won't enhance what's on the tower during that period of time. We might change out the electronics, we might change out whatever, but the physical location, its height, for the most part, stays consistent through that 25, 30-year lifecycle. So again, it does meet the bond requirements that are in front of you today for that. When you walk in here, again, we ask that you not walk behind, okay? We don't want you to bump into anything, but if you wanna walk in and see what's in these, they're, it's basically a lights-out data center. Again, it's a self-sustaining situation, where it has gas and a gas generator, if it does lose power, it continues to work. It has an uninterruptible power supply to take any type of electrical hits. If you look at that telephone pole back there, the new fiber that we're building with Cellcom underneath the bay, is coming in off that pole, and goes to this pole box right over here and in. And then we have 24 strands going into the building, goes out through the... This is one of ours. And I can tell you that Bay Electronics, Len Keenan, um, and everybody that was involved with getting this one spec, spec out, did a really good job.
Are the other two towers planned to be like this, self-supporting without any skywires?
At this time, they look to be 200-foot tries, yes. At the, this, 120.
This is what happened in the outline towers? Do they send the signal here, and then go?
Right, we have both transmit and receive off those towers. So we transmit out to those towers, or page off, and then as that officer talks on his portable, it goes back to that tower down there, and then comes here.
Or the southeast corner would be either through Brussels or here, southwest would be through Brussels, back to here eventually.
Boy, every ounce of communication for that building has to come through here to get in.
At this time, every wireless communication has to come in. There are some wired communications that can come in over other landlines. But what, it's a key point to understand, what Jason just said, is, those towers in the south are gonna hop to our high point, everybody knows Brussels Hill in Door County. We have a tower on top of Brussels Hill. Our tower on Brussels Hill is an 80 or 100-foot tower. If you ever go past Brussels Hill, you'll see a big red and white tower, that is the state tower. State Department of Transportation, State Patrol maintains that. We have our microwave dishes on the state tower. So there's one of our collaborations. And as a result of that, our microwave hops to their tower, then goes over, we use a little wireless link, and we repeat it off of our own tower on Brussels Hill. In the future, when we build these two towers in the south that are in the bond, both of those towers, or at least one of them, will come back to Brussels Hill and hop to here. So it's like a hopping situation. You'll also see in the bottom line, I have fiber initiatives for $50,000, because along the southern border, for those of you who were out at the Cellcom presentation, Cellcom is running fiber up and through the county to all of the base of their towers. So we have asked them, what would it cost to run some fiber to the base of our county-owned radio towers? So we're gonna look at that in the future as well. We would rely on fiber to carry our traffic, and the microwave be the backup to that fiber. So that is still in, in the, in the works down the road, 10 years old.
If this tower went down, do you have a backup that you can use, or do you go into the fiber?
If this tower goes down, that's why all the control stations that you saw in the MDF room, that's why all those control stations are there. They were, some of them were initially here, and that was a thought that we came up with at a CATS committee meeting one time, was, if something happened to this tower, and we had all the control stations here, it would essentially lock the, the system down. By moving everything over there, you would still have a redundant with control stations to talk to vehicles.
Alright.
Do you have to work through, I think it's Evans Engineering, when you cite, when you find your locations? For towers?
Right. RPC and the ordinance in Door County ask that you attempt to co-locate on existing towers. I mean, that's basically, um, being a good neighbor in Door County, trying to keep the number of towers down. Um, we don't necessarily work through Evans, we've been working mostly with Len Keenan, and then with site surveys and just geographic, using Tom Haines GIS system. We look for those areas that have elevation already, natural elevation, so we don't have to build a taller tower, to identify. But what's really dictating our need is the fact that you don't have portable or coverage in the car at various locations. And again, when we talk about the geography of Door County, we all know, especially along the bay, think about those communities where you all drive down, I mean, radio coverage is line of sight in many cases, and, and that's the issue. So using Evans or not using Evans, um, some of the things that we have to follow along with when we work with the RPC is our, height of our tower, close proximity to other parcel owners, all of that has to come into play.
You have Melody, and you got, uh, Corey right across the street, what's the difference in elevation between the two?
We estimated that was about 60 feet, and so that's 60 feet of tower build that you have to put in there. And the other thing is, is that it's an active quarry. Um, or we've been told it's still an active quarry, and as a result of it being an active quarry, I don't know if you wanna put it, something like this in the base of that. But it might have to be a fallback position. And again, that's where we're saying, although we expect that we could build a tower there for $435,000, one just like this, on the Melody, that's with land acquisition included. Um, that's a swag. You know, if the landlord wants to sell, if he doesn't wanna sell, now we have to take, and we have to stick it into maybe rather, what we thought was a 200-foot tower, we might have to put into a 300-foot tower.
Sounds like we have about three different meetings going on, it would be advantageous if everyone kinda listened up here, so you don't have to go back and repeat. However, are we just about to the end of the tour?
At this point, if you wanna just take a quick peek at what's inside of a typical radio tower, go ahead, and then we're gonna go over to the ambulance next, I'll meet you at the ambulance. Again, what we'll do is, we're gonna start with the discipline tours now, alright? So we're gonna come in here, we're gonna do the ambulance first, then we're gonna move to the sheriff, and Sturgeon Bay PD, and the last tour will be of the fire trucks. So actually, we have multiple fire trucks here today, so I want you to go to your district's fire truck, meet your, uh, firemen, and whatever. We're gonna let each of the people introduce themselves, and talk a little bit about how they use... they use the communication system. So you need to come in a little bit, take a look at why. It's imperative that they have their communications working in their vehicles, all right? I'm gonna turn it over to Aaron, and he'll introduce himself and his staff.
All right, good morning. Aaron LeClaire with Emergency Services, paramedic, my partner Julie with me today. Just real brief, we work in 24-hour shifts, so we're always on 365. The way we're notified of a call is through our pagers. We wear these all the time, on duty, off duty, whatever the case may be. When dispatch receives their call, it comes to us, it sounds something like this, if you can hear it, I don't know. This is actually a backup call, meaning they're looking for off-duty personnel to come in to cover a call.
6:40, per 6:80, we need a crew to stand by. They're en route to a head injury north of Ellison Bay. 6:40, we need a crew to stand by.
So I got that at home last night. I was unavailable, so I didn't go, but if I would, I'd use my portable. We're all issued portables, looks just like this. Depending on where you are, where I live, I work off central EMS. Generally, I have okay communications from my house. Once I get tight to the lake shore, not as well. If we're on duty and that call goes off, we use mainly our mobile radio in the squad. Generally, don't have too many issues with that. If we do, dispatch will let us know, and we try it again. At that point, we say we're en route, dispatch may give us updates on the patient while we're en route. Sometimes our EMRs or fire departments at the scene will give us updates. That's where we start to run into a lot of problems, because they're operating off portable radios. Depending where they are in Egg Harbor, we have a lot of issues sometimes hearing you guys. Savas pool along the shores at times, especially down south. Again, once we're on scene, we use the mobile radio, dispatch normally can hear us very well. Once we're on scene, we switch back to our portables, and that's where we can again run into problems of asking for additional resources, whether it be more crews, helicopter, whatever the case may be. And if we are asking for more help, it's normally not good. So it's very important that we get it rapidly. From there, we begin our transport, either 90% of the time back to Sturgeon Bay. The driver will radio over the main channel, but then we have another radio system that we use to talk to the hospital, and that's a whole separate, different system that, Carrie, I don't know, do you guys even copy that?
Uh, no.
Okay. So that's, we have a whole nother system in our squads that we use, and Chris, is that a UHF for the hospital?
Yes, UHF.
So it's a completely different system. So, you know, like I said, the problems we have tend to be very critical to us, because it could be a first responder calling out at a car accident that they have six patients. We aren't capable of handling that with this rig. Six patients, we need at least two more ambulances. So that can cause quite a delay until a radio that has enough boost or whatever it may be. If we're in a bad area, there's no choice, you may have to switch to your cellphone. At that point in time, your cellphones are just as unreliable in a lot of cases, especially in this county, as you guys may be able to relate to that a little more. But that tends to be our biggest, when we're calling for more help off a portable, is when we're, we need the help, and we can't really be delayed at that point. And that's where we tend to have a lot of our issues. So, is that my three minutes? You all have any questions for me?
Yeah. Good job.
Not sure.
That's where the crowd at.
What's that? I did the tires a smart.
Guys, guys, I'll come back and ask questions before we go make it, but just to keep it moving, let's get over to the sheriff's car and the police car, Sturgeon Bay PD. Let's get the group a little bit tighter, so we can keep it kind of focused and go in here. Would you guys come right in here, up the back of the cop car? I'm sorry, police car. Again, one of the things that we wanted to highlight today is that you have all of Door County to cover. So behind you have Sturgeon Bay PD, Door County Sheriff's car. Now, they're gonna walk you through their cars, so if the supervisor for Sturgeon Bay wanna work with this guy, in here, we're gonna pull you back in about five minutes. One of the other things we wanted to highlight is, this vehicle is a standalone communication system, all right? Which is also interoperable with dispatch and everything else that we have. And that design of that system was all put in place when a constituent of ours actually donated. So it's a really nice rig, and the sheriff always likes to show this vehicle off and its capabilities, okay? They like to show it off on a display like this today versus whether we had to have it deployed for a recent incident, all right? But I'm gonna let the sheriff take you to a car in this vehicle, and then Harley Porter and Mrs. Anger can take you through his car, and just talk a little bit about how they use their radio. It's a little different than the way an ambulance driver would use it, so, split apart, and we'll be back, we'll be to fire trucks in about five minutes. Just to keep the cool, okay? I'll go over here by the car if anybody's got any questions on the car.
You wanna look in the trunk?
Yeah.
As you notice with this car, everything is, the computer controls everything. These deputies now rely on this computer. They're, they communicate directly with other deputies through this computer. They get all their, they can see the calls with this computer. He's got a screen. Here's all the current calls, right there. This tells me where all the deputies are on the road right now, the city and county. When you get a fire call, the fire units will be listed here. Washington Island, but this tells the officer where exactly everybody is at any given time. When a call comes in, it will come up here, what the nature of the call is, so then the deputy can see where that call is, type of call, where is he going, who's being assigned to it. Does he get it audibly also? No. I wish a call would come in, what he, just, there'll be a little beep, especially if it's assigned to you, or it's updating. If I was on the road right now and they issued me a call, it would beep telling me that, you know, my screen has been updated, because it affects me, I'm gonna get that call. But it also is really nice, everybody's heard of Trax, that's the citations now are all electronic. They do them right here in the car, type them up, printer back here, they print them out, give them to the violator. Right here, with the state system, he can run any plate, person, or anything, right from his car. Before he ever approaches the car, he can only run, he can only run the plane. Yep. So like, I don't know whose car that is right there, that 168, but he could type in 168 PCF, run it, and that will come back telling him everything. Years ago, you'd always have to tell dispatch, but now, we don't need to go through dispatch and go through the, the computer. The radio, though, we still notify dispatch where the vehicle's being stopped for safety reasons, color of the vehicle, how many occupants are in the vehicle, our location, and then when the, the traffic stop is completed. So I know that you're here today for concerning communications. There are spots in the county that, well, you, you guys probably even know the spots. Murphy Park is one, if you're below the bluffs. Fish Creek, again, below the bluffs, you might as well forget your portables. County Union, down in the Breezy Acres area, well, your portables are just about, you know. So there is spots that throughout the county where the guys get familiar or recognize or realize, they're not gonna get out of their portables. Then the same thing happens with the cellphones. Each deputy's issued a cellphone, and then there's, there's spots they know they can't even get out with their cellphone.
It's the time, but let's bring it in tight, real tight. Nope, tighter, tighter. Come on, come on in. We got everybody's attention?
That's true.
All right, Leo said I gotta cut this off in about five to seven minutes. So what I'm asking that you do, okay, is we have three represented fire departments here, is that correct, Chris?
At least three, three or four.
Three or four, okay? Pick your favorite fire truck and go talk to the guys, let them introduce themselves, but we need you back in that room in seven minutes, okay? I need you back in that room in seven minutes. They gotta know what you want for lunch, all right?
I make this short, sweet, a rescue truck used for all types of specialty rescues and on the fire ground. Let's just take a couple examples of the use in this. There is a regular docking station for a laptop in this truck that runs off our radio system. In that laptop is a mapping system, so when we do search and rescue, or if we do a water rescue, we can actually pull a map of that area up and coordinate our search patterns with it. Unfortunately, some of the worst areas for communications in Door County are on the waterside, both the lake and the bay, so it renders us pretty much useless. One last example before you guys go in is, we had a water rescue out at Whitefish Bay a month or so ago. Jet ski, kid fell off a jet ski. Report of a jet ski floating in the lake, no report of any person. We've full complement, we respond out there, two boats, one from the city, our big boat that's docked, and we trailered our small boat out there. One of the sheriff's deputies went onto a third story of a home along the lake and looked out in the lake, and it was rough, four to six footers that day, and just happened to see a hand. The jet ski was about a half mile ahead of, of the person, because the, the waves take the jet ski faster. Just happened to see a hand, could not contact us on the shore. Finally, I got that information, and I could not talk to either one of the boats. So these two boats are doing search patterns out there while this kid is in the water, and we have just no way of, of talking to him. So, you know, typically, a glidden drive hitching post area is absolutely horrible on communications, and fortunately, we pulled this guy out, his core temperature was 88 degrees. Had he not had a life jacket on, you know, he'd have been gone, but we could, you know, it's really frustrating standing on shore telling them, you know, go that way, go that way. And of course, out in the water, they couldn't see anything because of the waves, so.
Will this new system solve those?
Absolutely, it'll improve it. Nothing will ever be solved because of our, some of our geographical issues, but I always tell people, think of all the times on your cellphones that you lose a call or you can't get, that's what our radio system is, and when it's an emergency, that's a big time for us. And unfortunately, that's the times we use our radios.